Okay.
We'll go ahead and get started. It is November thirtieth, Monday evening, six P M. Exactly. It's the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. Declare this meeting open. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to waive the announcement of open meeting recordings. If the board is so moved.
So moved. So moved.
Wait in seconds.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Stillings.
Aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is we have approval of minutes Treasury warrant payroll. Entertain a motion to approve Treasury warrant number eleven in payroll.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Ron, did you have your hand up? Sorry, Ron, you're on mute. Okay. Uh, we have approval of meeting minutes from November second and the sixteenth. I believe one of these sets of minutes, there was some corrections that a couple of board members had had recommended. I know Tamika put them in the folder. I want to make sure everyone got a chance to review those. If so, entertain a motion to approve both sets of minutes if the board so chooses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Stillings, Mitch, just discussion on the sixteenth. On the liquor license request for waiving the fee. Just could we add the word virtual before the sportsman's club that the sportsman's club has virtually no income coming in?
Okay, I'm fine with that amendment. Tamika, did you get that?
Yep.
Yep, I got it. I'll fix that.
Okay, everyone's a motion and second. Both okay with that amendment? Committing those motions, okay. All right, so we'll have a roll call vote because no other discussion. Leah, did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to thank Tamika for making those edits for the November second. I appreciate it. Thanks, Tamika.
Okay.
No problem.
All right, Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, next on the agenda, and then we'll, I think we'll take a couple of things out of order. We've got a bunch of people in the room for a specific set of agenda items, but we have public comment. Is there anyone here in the room for public comment? If there is, please use the hand raising feature in Zoom. And Peter Rutland Cable, who's running the Zoom, will let you in. Peter, do we have anybody?
We have no hands raised.
Okay. Um, if at any time you do want to join in, please raise your hand. I know sometimes it's hard to find that feature, so we'll move on. I guess we can move right along then. It's moving pretty quick, so we have a town administrator update.
Hey, thank, you see, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna first give some basic information, and I want to talk a lot about the COVID issue, but as I sent an email out to everybody today, we have started the official twenty twenty-two budget process. So on Wednesday, I started sending out a budget memo and Excel spreadsheets to a variety of department heads and finished that up today. So all my department heads do have the preparation, the preparatory work to start developing their budgets, and I gave them until December fourteenth to complete that process. You know, one of the tough issues this year is I think we all recognize that there is a structural deficit. And I made it clear to all my department heads that this budget essentially is going to be level funded except for those contract obligations that we have to make. Those are such things as union contracts, perhaps a lease on a copier, but things that are fixed in place that we have no ability to change. Those things will go up, but all other accounts, unless absolutely necessary, will stay at the same rate as last year. I don't enjoy that, but it is a response that I have to make, I feel, at least at this point, until we figure out a process for dealing with that two hundred and five thousand dollar structural deficit. I sent out that to all department heads and explained to both Bay Path and in our school district that we need them to really look closely at the budget that they do and create because the Town of Rutland has some financial issues we have to deal with, and we would appreciate it if they look at their spending this year and be fiscally prudent in order to help us get through that process. So that's going on. I want to be careful in my next comments because we don't want to talk about specific employees as it relates to COVID nineteen, because that would be a HIPAA violation. So don't, please don't identify. Some of you may be aware of specific employees, but please do not identify them in the conversation that we have because we'll create all kinds of violations and problems. As you're all aware, though, we did have an employee who did go through various town buildings, who ended up, on Wednesday, I was informed that the person might potentially be positive for COVID, had not been tested yet. But out of the utmost concern and protection for town employees, I made the decision to close Town Hall in the annex and town buildings effectively at noon on Wednesday until, one, we got the positive test, and, two, if we got the positive test, and we wanted to make sure that the buildings were cleaned and desanitized to make sure that everyone was safe. I appreciate Joe Buckley and immediately getting one of the contractors that we've been talking to about cleaning the buildings in on Saturday. And all the buildings were cleaned and sanitized on Saturday to make sure they were safe, but I also want to stress the following. The latest guidelines from CDC is that if, even if coronavirus was spread, let's say somebody was positive and they touched the desk or a bilk or whatever it was, that in less than twelve hours, the virus dies. So the fact that we were closed for four and a half days, the building was effectively desanitized in terms of the virus within that four and a half day period, so no employee should be concerned about that. But again, I want to stress that, you know, we did so for a couple of reasons. We have effectively right now, no maintenance staff. Both of them are out as it relates to COVID, one positive, one negative. Uh, but we wanted to have the buildings cleaned, and they were all cleaned and taken care of to alleviate some of the major fears that employees have just in general. Uh, so I thought that was pretty good. I explained and sent a note to the department heads to relay to all their employees on Sunday night to let them know the buildings were cleaned and that they were safe to be in. Uh, of course, there are people who are afraid, and I don't take anyone's fear lightly because all of us have a different fear tolerance. Now, I may be not as scared as some other people, but there's some people that generally have a high fear factor as it relates to this disease. Anyway, that was all worked out. Um, and I was in contact with Rich over the weekend and with Joe Buckley over the weekend to make sure that everything was was taken care of. Upon coming in today, though, I wanted to evaluate the building situation in general. As you know, there's a variety of different things that towns are doing. Some towns are completely closed, and they never reopened from the spring round of the virus. They never reopen. Many towns are by appointment only, and then there's quite a few towns that are still open to the public in a general way like we are. So it's a mixed decision by towns all across the state as to how to handle this. I wanted to take a look at, and one of the serious issues of consideration, under consideration, all town buildings are closed to the public with the exception of the Town Hall and the Annex. Those two are still open. Wanted to look at, does it make sense to go to an appointment process for those two buildings? And let me first say, and I'll say it in behalf of the superintendent, there's no right decision. No matter what's decision you like, you're gonna make people unhappy. No one's an expert in this in that they can make a honest decision, what's good or bad. No matter what you do, you're gonna take criticism, and that's just part of the job. But I looked at the appointment process, and we talked about at the doorways of both buildings having, you know, a shield, a table, so people couldn't really walk throughout the buildings. But the truth is, even if you put up a plastic display there to protect employees, you know, and taking the tour of the buildings, for instance, in the Town Hall, you go in the treasurer's office, the collector's office, there's these giant shields already in place. Employees are well protected behind those shields. So putting a smaller shield at the entrance didn't seem to make sense if we're gonna move forward with the appointment process. We looked at the structural issues of the building and didn't feel, me or the health director, feel that it would really add much to kind of quarantine the first part of the building. That if we do appointments, it's, you know, myself and I talked to numerous employees in the Town Hall were part of this discussion. I think generally, everybody agreed that if we do do appointments, we should just let them go up to the windows. Somebody will open the door for them, escort them to the office and do the appointment at the windows. A large issuer, and I sent you guys out a memo today, kind of describing the concerns I have here. I honestly believe that in many ways, employees are safer in the town buildings behind shields, wearing masks, taking all necessary precautions than they would be when they travel to Walmart or the supermarket or out to the general public. The risk is, I think, probably larger by going to those places than they are in town buildings. Because we make sure that everybody uses hand sanitizer, that they wear masks, that the shields are in place. So we go out of our way to make sure employees are safe. Uh, and if we do have an issue of COVID, we immediately clean the buildings and make sure that the buildings are safe in that respect as well. I said a couple of things in my memo to you, and one of the issues that concerns me is that almost every building in town, businesses, supermarkets, gas stations, restaurants, are all open to the general public. So you, as a citizen, can go anywhere you want in town. But town buildings, and I've had conversations with both Scott and Rich about this. But why does it make sense that town buildings are one of the only sets of buildings that are closed to the public? Find it a little difficult in making that decision because taxpayers are paying for us to provide services. They expect the buildings to be open, and I'm not sure why we should be the only ones that open. The town is now in what we call a red designation, which is we've reached over fifty, about fifty-four people that are positive, and that sets us to a new standard. But truthfully, most of the state is in red right now. And I asked Rich, and Rich did, and we not looked at the regulations, talked to somebody from the State Department of Health, and there, we thought there would be a rollback from the current phase we're in by the governor, that when you reach red, it would roll back into an earlier phase. Well, that's maybe true, but it's not true until after a town is in a red designation for a three-week period. So no businesses are gonna close, no restaurants are gonna close. Everybody's gonna continue to stay open. Uh, I am evaluating on a daily basis if we should close those buildings to the public. Have not pulled the string on that. I've had discussion, long discussions with both Rich and with Scott, and I appreciate uh, the viewpoints back and forth because both Scott and Rich have indicated that, you know, that they think it's not a bad idea at all to close the buildings to the public. And the major issue brought out is if somebody gets sick, and let's say they get sick in the inspections department, we could lose our whole inspections department and not be able to open. We don't have a deep bench, so to speak. The other side of that issue is if somebody in the inspection department can go to Walmart and get the disease and spread it through the inspections department just as easy or easier than, you know, getting that disease through the town departments and through customers that come into the building. So the risk factor, we would be eliminating the lowest risk to employees, and the high risk of them going out with their families or friends unmasked or to department stores or whatever is actually higher. So I'm not sure how much that gains us. But it is something that I wanted you to hear about. It is something we have to consider. Uh, I'm gonna work with both Rich and Scott on a pretty daily basis to decide when I would make that decision. If the board of selectmen feels it wants to get involved in that decision process, I have no problem whatsoever with that because every day I've tried to decide what I should do either way. Public, I think, and many citizens will be upset with us if we close the buildings and they can't use them when they look at everything else that's open. Some employees could also be concerned if we don't close the building, we're putting them at more risk than they have to be. So there's no winning strategy here. I'm hoping to any potential suggestions from any of you as to what your thoughts are, but as of right now, those are the only two buildings that are open to the public. I provided, I was talking earlier in the meeting to Mitch, and Mitch had asked me what other towns are doing. I provided Mitch a list. The list is a little older, not real old, of what many towns are doing. There are some towns, as I said, Mitch, if you want Mitch or me to go through it, we could tell you which towns are open, closed, which ones are by appointment. We have that list available. We are clearly not the only ones that are still open, so. We're doing the best we can, trying to make a decision with our experts. And like I said, it may be as soon as the next couple of days where I say, you know what? We're just gonna close them. I do want to point out that if we close the buildings to the public, my guess is they'll be closed at least until January nineteenth. It's not gonna get better from the results of Thanksgiving. We're going to Christmas. It could still be negative at Christmas. The school system is talking about potentially reinstating kids into the schools on January nineteenth. So if we do close, I'm pretty confident we won't be open any earlier than January nineteenth, and probably once we close it, it may be difficult to get it back open. But I, I did want to express all of that to each of you and keep you informed of the issue because you may hear comments from citizens and employees of concern on either side of opening and closing, so. Uh, that kind of, I just kind of wanted to lay down that for you as an issue, and I think those are the, those are the main issues I want to speak with the board tonight, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. I think Leah has her hand up. Leah, go ahead.
Um, if I may, I was just curious, if the buildings are closed down, is there a way to ensure that phone, the phone system can be directed to either cell phones or homes, so people are still able to work from home, and it's not the same level of service that people are accustomed to coming into the office and having that face-to-face interaction, but that they feel that there's a more quick response than what they were experiencing in the spring when we shut down?
Leah, no, it might. Ron, if I could just piggyback off that before you do address it, I think, Leah, there's two different things there. It's my understanding that you have the buildings closed and employees either at a work-from-home situation, or you have the buildings only closed to the public so that the employees can still be in the buildings doing those jobs just perhaps more safely. Um, I think that that's, does that make sense? I think that's the distinction, and Ron, I hope you want to address that.
That's exactly what's gonna be my answer, or the buildings will remain open to employees. Employees are expected to show up every work. There's no reason to work from home, and they're gonna continue to work. We, we have the shields up in the building. All employees are required to wear masks. And frankly, for the most part, I've seen employees be pretty good with it. I will also say that there's some employees that are a little bit looser, and I made comments to those employees as well today. Uh, we need to protect ourselves. We can't say, okay, we're gonna close the public and then not wear masks in the offices, be, you know, be looseness. And again, I think the risk among employees is not from general public coming into the building, but from when they go home with their families and don't wear masks, or when they go to the supermarket, or when they go to places that are higher risk. That, to me, is a bigger risk factor in the individuals than what happens at Town Hall, where they're all required to meet the safety guidelines we put in place. So I'm not concerned about that, Leah. There are, there are a lot of people who understand they can bring your tax bills and put them in the drop-off box. There's a lot of that. Frankly, my understanding is the people who use the Town Hall building the most in terms of taxes of senior citizens who are not technologically advanced, who come and pay their taxes at the window. Those are the people with the biggest risk, but they're the ones with the biggest need because they just don't deal with technology. So that's the, you know, from the tax office, that's what they see as little, you know, older people coming in to pay their bills.
Uh, Lyndon, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I have a little bit of a concern that we're talking about closing all the town buildings, and we're gonna be holding a town meeting. I think it sends a little bit of a mixed message. So I don't know that this is the time to consider closing buildings if we're gonna have a town meeting.
And if I could, Lyndon, thank you. I think that's a well-put statement. You know, one of the things I did is I put together a team of people to look at the special town meeting. Having learned about what you guys did at the annual town meeting in terms of using technology, and Anita and Peter, one of the other cable guys, and one other person went over to the school to look at the technology you guys during the summer, the annual meeting, could we use it? The problem is that that equipment won't work through the concrete walls of the building. We had hoped to allow people who were scared to go into the building to sit in their cars, and we could have the sound going in their cars and have them vote, but the system just doesn't work in that respect. So the special town meeting, we're gonna use all the safety precautions. Seth has been working hard and Rich making sure that, you know, we meet all the requirements of a safe building. We will space people. We will require masks. We will disinfect the microphone. But you're right, it kind of doesn't make sense to have a public meeting and at the same time, closing town buildings.
Uh, Ron, will you still be setting up shields at the check-in tables and such?
Um, I didn't ask that direct question. You know, Seth has kind of been leading the efforts on that. He assures me that we're gonna meet all safety standards, but I just, I don't want to answer you because I didn't ask him that direct question.
I think that should be considered. Like I said, if we have shields and other precautions in the offices and we're considering shutting down, we should name precautions at the meeting.
And I think the check-in would be outside. So I think that helps too. Anything you can do outside is better than having things on inside, so. Um, you know, we, I'll talk to Seth about that tomorrow to make sure that is in place as well.
Okay, do we have any other questions from the board members? About Ron's update. I just think, Ron, too, I know you've been working closely with with Scott and Rich and Seth on this. Uh, I think the board, I can't speak to the board, but I know that those have been kind of daily briefings. As just as the numbers rise and as, you know, we get into the holiday season, I think every indicator is that it's the transmission because of, you know, the holiday season and gatherings and things like that that we have to worry about. As those numbers go up, though, we just ask that that we look at that and just keep monitoring the situation if we have to make an action. Um, you know, certainly, we, we trust in our officials to do that.
You know, Mitch, I think it was important. I had a conversation, I think Scott's on this, but I had a conversation with Scott not too long before the meeting tonight to talk about it, and we had exchange of ideas and concepts, and I think we both understand each other really well. And I don't know that there really is a right answer, but there is different opinions about what you should do. Uh, I want to thank Scott and and our health agent as well because they have been working with me, directing and talking to me and sharing their ideas. And listen, I'm not an expert here, so I value the opinion of Scott and Rich, you know, to a high extent, so I will be working with them each and every day to make a decision. Regardless of what you guys think, in a couple of days, I may make the decision to pull the plug and close those two buildings to the public, but I'm not quite there yet, and we'll see what happens as we move forward.
Okay, uh, thank you. I guess, moving on, um, I think we have old business. I think what we could do, if the board is okay with it, we have a lot of people on for a couple of specific items. Maybe taking those out of order. Are there any objections to taking a couple of the items on our new business out of order to respect the guests we have?
No objections.
All right, seeing none. Um, I think what we should probably tackle first is the item sixty-two, the Bay Path request for consideration. I think we have Kyle Brenner on the call as well, uh, as well as maybe a couple of members of the school committee for Bay Path. So as part of our funding packets, uh, sorry, the meeting packets for tonight, we had some background information on this item. Uh, it was a request for an allocation of CARES Act funding through Bay Path Vocational School for related, COVID-related expenses incurred. The the portions of the funding were all based on student enrollment. So I don't know if we can either pull that up or if you can take a look at it in your packets. I believe the amount was in the range of about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, I know Kyle wanted to come in and kind of brief the board as to the background behind the request and maybe go through some of what do that entails. Are there any questions before we move forward from the board members? All right, seeing none. Uh, Kyle, I think you're on the call here. Um, if you wanted to just introduce yourself, and I guess we can have that discussion.
Sure. Uh, good evening, and thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm Kyle Brenner, Superintendent Director of Bay Path. And first I'll apologize, Mr. San Angelo, for the incorrect name for the town administrator. Congratulations. I'm new to Bay Path this year as well. So in August, we sent out a letter just asking for thoughtful and thoughtful consideration of including us in your CARES Act funding. As you know, the first round of federal funding was given directly to the schools, and the second, more substantial round, went to the municipalities with the understanding that school-related expenses for remote learning and disinfecting and you know, personal protective equipment be part of that consideration. So we asked for thoughtful and equitable consideration from each one of our ten member communities. We didn't put a dollar figure or a formula on that. We just want to generate the the thought process around it, and one of our towns stepped up and we looked at a percentage of enrollment and what our shortfall is. Our current as of mid-October, projected shortfall was about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for technology to do the hybrid remote learning as well as disinfectant and PPE needed. We're currently in a hybrid model now, and we looked at that, and your Rutland's percentage of foundation would be about four point three-three percent, so that would equate to about thirteen thousand, five hundred and, I believe, ten dollars, nineteen dollars of the three hundred and twelve thousand budget shortfall uh, that we have for COVID-related expenses this year. And I can answer any questions you have, specific to, we could, if you were to consider, you know, working with us on this, we could, we have several current bills, you know, I can think of one for Microsoft, one for Micronet, and we have one from Amazon. We could assign you a portion to a portion of that, and its bill would be a sub-grantee of your grant, and we could process the paperwork on that. We have several upcoming expenses, you know. The money has to be expended by December thirty-first. We have some coming in the pipeline. We could have a more current where we could total up existing expenses, you know, to the amount that you would consider, you know, granting Bay Path.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Uh, Lyndon, go ahead.
Just to clarify, so in the first phase, there were funds available to the schools, so Beth, Bay Path received those funds, and they've been exhausted? Is that the status?
Correct. So the initial round of funding, and Dean Icabucci, our business manager's on, he can refresh my memory as to the amount that was received. The initial round was a limited amount directly to the schools for COVID-related expenses, and the second round went to the municipalities. That was a more substantial grant offering. So, Dean, how, how much did we receive in the initial round directly to?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Dean.
Ron, congratulations. By the way, it was nice dealing with you in your former position, and now we'll be dealing with you here, so congratulations.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you, Dean.
Thank you. Uh, we received three grants, COVID Virus Relief Fund in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. The ESER Grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars, and the Essential Technology Grant in the amount of forty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars. So we have total grant funds of three hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Including in those grants, or when we take into consideration those grants, we still have an estimated shortfall of expenses of the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We haven't fully expended the grants because some of the big bills haven't come in yet. For instance, when we start our second semester with TECA for remote learning, we're expecting that bill will be somewhere between one hundred and one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And those are what we're using our grants for. Uh, the COVID Virus Relief Fund of two sixty-five has just about been spoken for with the items that Mr. Brenner mentioned earlier. Uh, we've made a very large initial purchase of computers, and now we're looking at, not looking, we've actually received additional requests for technology. Uh, Mr. Brenner authorized a purchase today of something just shy of fifteen thousand dollars, and we know that the sped department's gonna be coming with a request And we know that the sped department's gonna be coming with a request of fifteen thou, of somewhere between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars. So in addition to all of the uh anticipated expenses we've had. We're continuing to see departmental requests and expenses uh related to remote learning. So although we haven't spent all of our grant funds yet. Uh, our anticipated expenditures will exceed those funds by three hundred thousand dollars plus.
Are you fully um virtual or, or are you having some classes in session?
No, we, we're in a remote, uh, we're in a hybrid model. Uh, some days are uh remote learning, some days are in person. There's always uh students in the building. But half the population is in the building at any, on any given day.
Uh, Leah, I see your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you Mitch. Um, I appreciate both uh, Mr. Brenner and Mr. Ian Icabucci for coming on and talking with us. Um, I was wondering, Ron, maybe this is a question for you. I don't see Seth on. How is our COVID CARES? Um, account looking and I think we have one more uh, uh, opportunity put in for uh reimbursement for that. Is that correct? So just kind of that's.
That is correct and, and there is fourteen thousand in there. Whereas, we, we have, sometimes if you utilize other funds in round one and two, we have not. Utilized our full allocation. There's, there's no question the fourteen grand is there. The, the town issue would be that we don't know what the future costs are gonna be and how long this is gonna continue. So, you know. We're cautious that, you know, we don't wanna give away funds that we might need. But I don't know what we're gonna need because I don't think any of us understand what the future's gonna bring. Uh, obviously through at least January until we get into probably March or April, we're not gonna see the vaccines, so this is gonna go on for a while. We're cleaning buildings and stuff. I, I, I appreciate what Bay Path is asking and, and frankly, what Shusis could be next. And they may wanna come in and get money too. I'm the, I.
That number's.
Knows that there's a right answer.
Hey, any further questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of Dean?
Uh, go ahead, Ron.
So, so Dean, my only question to you is it, I'm hearing about the. Expense side of your budget in terms of the COVID costs and obviously. Everybody's going to more technology, computers, Chromebooks, all that good stuff. You know, some towns see, had significant reductions in things like transportation issues, because obviously kids aren't being bused to schools. I guess it, the question I'm having is, yeah, we're, we're talking specifically about the COVID stuff, but in your overall budget. Are you telling me that right now you think in your overall budget, you're gonna have a deficit for this year? To the two and a three hundred and seven thousand dollars? How does it all work together, I guess is my question, Dean?
Yeah, no, our, our budget right now is uh, we're looking at a deficit between seven hundred thousand and a million dollars. The three hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we're talking about tonight are just COVID-related expenses. Uh, we did see a significant amount of savings in transportation expense last fiscal year. Uh, in the area of almost four hundred thousand dollars. Instead of keeping those funds, Ron, and closing it out to our free cash, in June. We recommended to the school committee to establish a transportation reimbursement fund. And we transferred four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue. From our funding for our operational budget into this transportation reimbursement fund. There was approximately uh, two hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars or ninety thousand dollars. In savings from us shutting down in the middle of March and not having those uh expenses through the end of June. We also aggressively uh negotiated with our busing contract. Because if you've been following this, you can see that some districts paid as much as seventy-five or eighty-five percent of their contract. Uh, even though the buses weren't running. We were significantly below that at thirty percent. Uh, so we took the excess uh revenue that we had and the excess revenue was a result of not having the expenses. And the school committee voted to transfer those funds into this reimbursement fund. The way a transportation reimbursement fund works is that those funds have got to be spent on transportation. They've got to directly benefit our ten towns and they can only be held there for one year. So that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the school committee transferred in, in fiscal year two thousand twenty. Is being used right now to pay for our transportation. That, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ron.
No, I'm just a little confused. So the money's in this reimbursement fund. Who's getting the money? I. You, you say it's gonna be used for transportation among the town, towns. What does that mean? Is that? For transportation for special ed kids? Is that transportation reimbursement to parents? What exactly are you paying?
We don't charge parents. It's.
So what's reimbursement going to?
It's going to lower the transportation assessments to the ten towns.
For the, for the fiscal twenty-two or?
Fiscal twenty-one budget.
With fiscal twenty-one, okay.
Now, is that, was that, I'm sorry, um.
I just wanna clarify Mitch, just, just so everyone's on the same page. This is Joe. Uh, you know, uh, Bay Path is in a hybrid mode, so busing is running currently and has been since the start of the school year.
Right. I was just under the impression that any access from the transportation allocation had to be, you know, maybe this is what you're describing. Rolled over to help offset the next year's transportation costs. Um, for the town. That was my understanding because we, after having approved transportation for Waukesha, which has not been. In a hybrid model, um, obviously that money got rolled over. We didn't see any of that money back. It wasn't distributed back, so. Um, is that, is that kind of what you're describing, Dean?
Yeah, let me, um, for those of you who've been around uh and dealt with our budget, you know, we have an operational budget. We have a transportation budget, we have a debt service budget, and we have a capital budget. Transportation uh is a real simple uh calculation. We estimate our costs and then the funding for that in the past has been. Our chapter seventy-one reimbursement and then the difference is what's assen, uh, assessed to the ten-member towns. Based on their finance, uh, their foundation enrollment. So for this current fiscal year, our transportation budget is one million five hundred and four thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. Uh, of that total cost. We believe we're gonna receive somewhere in the area of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in chapter seventy-one funding. We're going to offset that expense by four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And assess our member towns three hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which is the difference. So that is what's making up your transportation assessment. It's a total cost of one point five million. Uh, state aid of approximately seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand coming out of this transportation reimbursement fund. And the balance of three hundred and forty-five thousand being assessed to our ten towns.
So it's, so, Mr. Chairman, okay, through you?
Sure.
So, so Dean, just to kind of follow up here. If, if the towns were decided not to give you money from the CARES Act, would that result in higher assessments for next year?
No.
So then what would you do? Spend less? You wouldn't buy something? What, what, what would you do?
We would have to look at a way of allocating our current resources to cover the. Three hundred and twelve thousand dollar expenses that we have, that are COVID-related, that were not budgeted.
And, and just to get back to your point, is that mostly technology-related? Chromebooks and such for the hybrid model or what, what, what are you spending the money on?
The, the majority of that money went to technology, uh, not just hardware, but a lot of software, remote learning, a lot of. Uh, eBooks, uh, a lot of platforms such as Zoom. Uh, but the majority, the vast majority was technology-related. When you think of everything that brings in. Uh, or that comes into play in remote learning. In addition to that. We have a fair amount of PPE, sanitation, sanitizer. Uh, MIR filters for our HVAC system. Uh, I, I mean, without having run any numbers, I would say probably. Seventy-five percent of the expenses, technology and remote learning uh, related. The other twenty-five percent. Are those other things like sanitation, uh, building-related expenses, sanitizer, things of those natures.
My last question is this, Dean, is that. I'm assuming that you've checked in with the state on the CARES money, that that is a qualified. Expense on the town side to give it to the school system to meet those needs. That's.
Right.
I think that was a part of your sentence, right?
Right. What we would recommend, Ron, is uh, if the town of Rutland is willing to uh contribute towards these expenses. We would find, uh, and we already have some, uh, and, and Mr. Brenner was explaining this a little earlier. We'd find one bill, uh, because if any of you were around during the AA, the ARRA. Uh, funds, the reporting of those expenditures were a nightmare. Uh, and I suspect the same's gonna happen with this and the reporting requirements to the federal government. So instead of giving you eleven bills that total thirteen thousand dollars. We would allocate the expenses out of one computer purchase that. The total purchase exceeds the thirteen thousand and we would allocate uh, a portion of that bill to the town of Rutland. And yes, technology is really the, the big expense. Uh, or the, the biggest reason that they were authorizing funds to begin with. Uh, was a mechanism for us to provide remote learning to our students.
So Dean, my last comment then goes to this, is that, as you know, towns have already applied for the round two of the funding, the CARES Act funding. So I imagine that none of the towns, when they made their application for round two, included these funds in their round two apps, so. Yeah, I'm assuming you need this money quicker than the round three applications. How are you gonna deal with that issue?
Well, as I said, Ron, I mean, we're experiencing the, the expenditures right now. Uh, we would uh have to deal with it. I mean, the bottom line is where we haven't. Made any permanent adjustments via a school committee vote to our budget because the state still hasn't finalized the budget. Once that happens and we have a firm commitment in our transportation reimbursement. A firm commitment in our chapter seventy funding, we will uh, allo, reallocate funds, make. Reductions where, where they're necessary. I mean, you know as well as I do, we can't overspend our appropriation. And we have no intentions of doing that. Uh, Kyle and I have already spent a fair amount of time identifying areas in the budget where we can make reductions. And although we haven't put on a total budget freeze. Uh, all of our departments have been uh made aware that we will not be entertaining any large purchases. That are outside of uh, something required for a remote learning atmosphere. Not looking to purchase any vocational equipment at this point, although funds have been budgeted for those. Things. There were some academic equipment that weren't technology-related, that were included in the budget. We're not buying those things. Uh, those aren't must-haves. So until we have a firm uh. Ideas to what our budget is, we're not making any large purchases, even though funds were allocated for those uh, at the beginning of this. Budget year. So, you know, we, I guess we could call it a soft budget freeze if you want. We're still buying supplies for the classrooms. We're still buying things so that, you know, quality education can be given to our students. They deserve it and. Uh, and we're moving forward like that, but we're not making any big expenses. And we've already identified areas that we could recommend to the school committee uh for reductions.
So, so Mr. Chairman, here's the, just a little bit of technical dilemma. We recently applied for the round two of the funding. So we applied for a whole bunch of things, not including this money for the school district. I'm not sure if anyone knows the timing of the round three funding, but. You know, it could be a couple of months down the road and, and. I, I don't know exactly the timing of this. Obviously, they need to have the money prior to closing fiscal year twenty twenty-one in June, but. I'm not sure how the timing plays out, but obviously. You know, we could very easily put this in for the round three funding, if that's what the board wants to do, but I, I. Dean, does that timing make sense if we have to wait to the round three funding? Do you have any idea when that might be?
I don't have any idea when they're gonna be checking for round three money. Uh, I, I'm, I'm of the firm belief that. They should be looking at extending round one beyond December thirtieth. Because there are, as crazy as this sounds, and I'm sure you're hearing it in your circles, Ron. There are cities and towns that can't spend what they were given by December thirtieth.
Yeah, they're allowing the continuation though, Dean. My understanding is that even if they don't spend it, they'll allow. That money to stay over and you can roll it into other things or continue expenses. That's my understanding of it for the round one.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything official to that, but it would certainly make a lot of sense. Because there are lots of towns that can't spend what they've been allocated by December thirtieth.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I've spoken more than enough. Thank you.
Do we have any uh, Dean or Kyle, um, have you received any uh? I guess confirmations from the other communities you've asked regarding this funding? All right, Kyle.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have. We've received two of our municipalities uh, have. Contributed the, their share under the foundation enrollment calculation that. We came up with and uh, Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, we've already sent them the backup documentation for the items that were ordered. Right?
Yes, one, one of the towns has already actually provided payment to us. The second town we just sent the information to last week, uh, Rutland would be the third. And in both of those cases. Uh, we use the model that we explained a little earlier. We uh, apportioned a large bill, technology-related, to the town for their share. And then uh, quite frankly, hit our other grants here for the balance.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? Input from our school committee members? Anyone in the public, have any questions? All right, seeing none. Uh, I think what we would be looking for uh is a motion in good faith to, to approve this if the board. Uh, so wishes to do so. Uh, we could also uh, hold until we hear about round three funding. Uh, with the intent of perhaps revisiting this when that's announced. Uh, there's a couple of options in front of the board. Uh, I wanna leave it to the board to, to uh, to make that decision. Jeff, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just quick clarification. So we're talking about fourteen thousand dollar commitment from, from Rutland's portion, correct?
Thirteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, yeah.
Are we comfortable, Ron, through the chair, to uh? To exert the thirteen thousand dollars from our phase one funding?
So.
If you want that?
Yeah, so, three, Mr. Chair, that's my technical concern. I'm not against this. I. Frankly, I've worked with Bay Path. I have a lot of respect for them and I know they're frugal and, and very responsible in their budget, so. So I'm not against this in any way. My, my concern is that we applied for phase one and phase two funding, round one and round two. And we have to specifically state to the state, federal government, exactly what we're applying for and. Either in round one or not round two, did we apply for this type of funding? So we'd have to talk to Seth and say, is there any extra money in what we asked for that we could reapply for this purpose in, in say, round two? Round three, if there is a round three and if it meets the timing of them in terms of their budget process, that would be the easiest thing, but I don't think any of us know when round three is starting. I'd be happy to apply for that and let the state know that we're applying fourteen grand for that. I just don't know when that is. So it, it's more of a technical problem than a. A, you know, a problem in, in supporting what they're trying to do.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to follow up again with Ron, uh, through the chair. Approximately how much do we have that's gonna be unallocated coming December thirty-first from the CARES fund? Unallocated.
Yeah, and, and the problem is, I don't, I didn't bring that number with me. I wasn't expecting that. I can email that to you guys tomorrow. There's clearly enough money that, and you know, if we had a round three to give fourteen grand for them. Again, I don't know what our, our personal needs are gonna be for our town, but there's clearly enough if we were to go to round three funding. Seth has been very prudent in making sure that we only, you know, spend that money in a wise way and for legitimate things, so. Money is there. We haven't spent our full allocation. It's there. It's just not allocated for this purpose.
I'm, lastly, through the chair, so my, my point is that we wouldn't be taking from some other obligated uh, need. I.e., you know, the ambulance or PPE for the police. We're not pulling from that in order to fund this.
Not if we used it in a round three, we would be applying specifically for this purpose. We would know that in our application process for round three. My problem is right now, round two, we've asked for money, specific amounts of money to meet current needs. So if we were to take money out of round two, we would have to take money away from something we allocated for to give it to them. Now, it's only fourteen grand, so it's not huge. But it would mean if we took money from round two, we'd, we'd have to reallocate that money from a existing plan to this new, new thing, so.
So taking your recommendation, Ron, is to table it to round three.
Well, I guess I would say this here. I think, and, and I guess my question to Dean, Dean, is it gonna tell you to give me another two weeks to work with our. Um, fire chief, who's our emergency management director, to see if we can figure this out? Can I, if we gather the two weeks, I think we can give the board of selectmen a better answer if, if that timing works for you guys.
Yeah, no, we can certainly operate within that, Ron. Uh, you know, we're not gonna close the school up. Uh, we're, we're, we've taken the uh necessary steps we have so that we're not caught in June. With an overspent budget. So, yeah, that, that works well within our timeframe.
So, Mr. Chair, I would recommend we hold this until the next selectman's meeting to give me and the fire chief some time to analyze. to give me and the fire chief some time to analyze this and, and give the board a recommendation, but I will say publicly that, in generalized support the, the concept of doing this and supporting Bay Path, but uh, but I think we, it would be prudent to wait the two weeks.
I, I agree. I, I think conceptually, I, I support this. Uh, I too have worked a, a long time ago with Kyle in his former position at Worcester boat. Uh, I'm not sure he remembers working on those, those wreath projects in Worcester, but that was a lot of fun. Uh, so I, I certainly have a high opinion of, of the job that, that you guys are doing. Um, and so a, again, I think we'll just get some more clarification. We can revisit this at, at our next meeting if it's not overly time sensitive. Uh, but I would agree with our TA and that conceptually, I think that this is a, this is warranted. Uh, and we can have that, that discussion and that vote the next meeting.
Need a motion, Mitch?
I don't think we, we need a motion. Uh, I think, uh, Ron, we can probably just hold it without a motion, or we could motion to, to table it, but I don't think that's necessary at this point. It just continues as an item.
And I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, superintendent, uh, Dean, thank you for coming in. I certainly appreciate you uh, walking us through the request and look forward to, to working with you again in a couple of weeks when we get a little bit more clarity on, on how those funds can be, can be brought in.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, town administrator and select board members. Uh, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So uh, again, taking things out of order, if the board doesn't have any objections, uh, the uh, other item that I think the majority of folks are probably on here waiting for, and I thank them for their patience, uh, is the, the school committee uh, physician um, appointments. Uh, first, I guess we'll take number fifty eight. We have a resignation from a school committee member, Nicole Amos, that we received about two weeks ago. Um, so I think we officially have to recognize that resignation. So I'll entertain a, a motion to um, to formally accept the resignation of school committee board member, uh, Nicole Amos.
I'm moved.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Um, any further discussion, uh, other than to note, I think we're gonna be noting to thank you for your service and uh, it certainly is appreciated. These are certainly interesting times to be serving in this position, so. All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark?
Aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Uh, Whitman?
Whitman, aye, with regrets.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Mercy, aye, motion carries unanimously. Let's move it on to uh, item fifty nine. Uh, school committee interviews and potential appointments. Uh, we had a, uh, after the last school committee meeting, as you can imagine, a flurry of interested folks reach out. Um, Laura had done a nice job in contacting those folks to ask for some additional materials. Um, of the folks that provided the additional materials, I think we have four or five applicants. Um, some of them are here tonight on the uh, the Zoom meeting. And so I guess uh, we'll start with, um, if we want to uh, well, first, I guess to back up, uh, Ron did invite our school committee, our existing members into this meeting as well to participate. I don't believe uh, Sherry is on, but I think Matt is here in the meeting. Uh, so I'd like to thank them for, for attending. Um, Sherry, if you are here, I apologize. I can't see you, but um, raise your hand and, and um, can. Um, all right, so we have in front of us a, a list of, of folks that had pull them up here. Applied, um, Allison Mascheravito, uh, Brett Beardmore, Jeffrey Sullivan and uh, Michael Pantos Junior, who had all submitted cover letters uh, and resumes. And so I wanted to open it up to the board for discussion. As to process, we can have these individuals, if they are in the meeting, introduce themselves, talk a little bit why they wanna be on the school committee, um, which I think is a precedent that we followed over the last couple of appointments. Um, and just to be clear too, Ron, if you can clarify that this appointment uh, would only last until May, at which point, um, folks would have to run for their seats, so it's not filling the duration. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding, it's not fulfilling the duration of the vacancy. It is only held over until the, the uh, next election period. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna point out that Mike and Allison, uh, Mike is gonna be in late, he had another meeting scheduled prior to this, and Allison couldn't make it because of another serious commitment. Uh, I just want you to know that they're both very interested, but being the late notices meeting, they, they couldn't make it. And again, Mike will be here a little later, I, I understand.
Well, we can uh, I think Mike is here. He's in the meeting.
Who is Mike?
Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
But uh, we did receive an email about Allison. Um, certainly, uh, her application materials, um, I think will stand on their own, are very well put together, so and we understand, um, the position she's in and we certainly appreciate her submitting those materials. Obviously, being here was not a, a prerequisite, uh, though it would have been, been nice to, to chat with these folks a little bit. Uh, Leah, you have your hand up?
Uh, just for clarification, we have two openings, right? So we're looking to potentially appoint two individuals.
Yes. Okay, so I guess we can um, we can open it up. I see uh, Mike is in, Jeff is in. Um, Matt is in and I don't see the other, either of the other two applicants, so. Oh, you see, you do see Brett. Oh, there he is. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess um, we'll just, we'll start on that one then. Uh, Brett, uh, if you wanna um, say a little bit something about yourself and, and why you wanna serve. Uh, you know, we've reviewed your, your materials, uh, and thank you for submitting that. Um, and go ahead.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Yeah, so a little bit about myself, I've been in Rutland about five years now. Um, I've got two children, uh, ten and six. Um, a, and my interest is really um, about helping the community. This, this is an interesting time. This is a good opportunity for me to get involved and contribute. Um, it's more about, for me, i- it's more about coming in and learning and helping. Um, it's, 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 it's a little different from my background. If you looked at my materials, my background is in the sciences. Uh, I hope that can help uh, add value to the teams and the committees. I think it will, um, but it's more about just, just again, offering that help. So my background for everybody is, is in the sciences. Um, I have a master's, a science degree in the biopharmaceutical, so I understand how drugs are approved and how they're regulated. Um, so, so that may help in the COVID times. Um, uh, that is at a high level. Um, this opportunity will help me learn more and, and, and branch out and develop my resume and really understand more outside of this, what, what goes on in the community in town.
Okay, uh, do we have any questions for Brett? Leah?
Thank you, Brett, for coming on and for applying or going out for this opportunity. Um, I have a question. One of the feat, some common feedback that we've received over our past couple resignations is the time commitment. Um, I think especially given s- the COVID times, the time commitment for school committee, I'm sure you've watched the meetings and everything, is a lot more than what it is in sometimes. So I was just wondering how you feel, um, equipped to balance that time with work and home life and everything.
That's very fair. So I met with Sherry prior to this meeting and prior to formally applying, just to confirm the amount of time, because I, it, it was hard for me to figure out what the amount of time is really gonna be. My personal life and work-life balance is very good, so my employer allows for opportunities to volunteer, so this fits into that program. I don't have to commute as of right now, so I don't have that kind of tie. So I do have more flexibility into my schedule. Uh, my wife is a stay-at-home mom, so she helps with a lot of the day-to-day in the family, freeing up more time so that I can do this. And of course, she supports my uh, active involvement in this town, so I do have the time and, and the balance to be able to, to, to blend that. So that is a fair question and one that I have, and I, I do feel I have the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I also answered the other question I was gonna ask. If you had talked to either one of our current school committees, Sherry or Matt, um, about their experiences or time commitment or anything, so thank you for adding that.
Yeah, Sherry was great helping me understand, you know, what, what the role is and what's, what, what the need is and how I can help, and it seems like a good fit.
Okay, uh, I have a question, uh, Brett. We've received a lot of interest initially from these openings. I think in part because a very I, I don't wanna say contentious, but um, a very widely, I, I wanna say criticized um, school committee meeting that occurred uh, well, almost two weeks ago now. Um, these are obviously trying times. Uh, you know, you have, as a school committee member, you're gonna be under a lot of scrutiny. Um, you know, we had talked earlier about a decision with our TA about where we can close the buildings. There are no good uh, answers right now. Um, and some of the stuff you see in public on social media, whatever, can be very daunting um, in that position. Uh, I just wanna make you aware of that, but I also wanted to get your sense as to, you know, what you felt initially. You have kids in the school system. Obviously, we're trying to be sensitive to, to health and safety. Uh, at the same time, parents, I think, polled upwards of eighty percent of parents would like to move to a hybrid model. Um, and I think a lot of folks were disappointed in the lack of a plan. Right? Which ultimately, you know, whether you, whichever way you cut it, I mean, it really falls on the school committee to kind of be abreast of some of these things going on. Um, I really just kinda, what's your view on what's been happening and, and what do you think you can bring to, to the table? Um, that would, would I guess help bridge the disconnect between parents and the district and what's occurring at the actual school level?
Um, that, that, that's good. That, 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 very kind of a broad, broad question, but there's a couple key things and I'm used to in my work-life, high stressful, high responsibility, fast-paced type environments, stressful environments. And one of the key takeaways, when I go switch jobs, when I, you know, develop my network, one of the key traits is, is my attitude of helping others and a positive attitude. I can understand it's stressful. I know it's stressful. Um, I have the right attitude to help ease the stress and and not just what you said about the lack of a plan, but it's more about the visibility of the plan. And hopefully, I can help bridge that visibility and, and really communicate the concerns. That's key. So the key is really to be the voice of the people. Um, what we spoke earlier about opening, closing the buildings, I thought was interesting because it's a risk-based approach and, and that's gonna be the model that we're gonna have to keep driving. What, what is the flavor for risk? And, and that's hard. That's very gray, so those are areas where I, I think I can help a, and that's some of the challenges that I, I think are really gonna be there for the town. Um, yeah, I, I think that hopefully that answers your question.
Oh, it does. Thank you. All right, does anyone else have any questions for Brett? I don't wanna take up too much of your most time, 'cause I know we have a bunch of folks, so. Um, all right, seeing none, I guess we'll move on. Uh, thanks again, Brett. Your, your, uh, obviously, your resume is excellent, so I'm certain I appreciate you here, um, in the meeting. Um.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you for the time and your attention.
Yeah, um, I think next, uh, I'm just gonna go by order in which they're on the screen here. Uh, we have Jeff Sullivan. Uh, Jeff, you there?
Yes, I am. Hold on one second.
Yep.
There we go. Ooh, sorry. Forgive that, that's my school background. I apologize. Um, so yes, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And, and similar with Brett, I have a lot of the same uh, reasons for wanting to, to join, but I'll just go through, um, you know, me, me personally. Uh, I've lived in Rutland for twenty years. Uh, I have three students, three children. Uh, one just graduated and one is a junior and one is a fifth grader. Um, I am currently a principal in Lemonster, uh, educated for twenty-five years, five, the last five years has been as administrator. Uh, and really, as you mentioned, as you referred to earlier, it has been, I've been following the school meetings. Uh, you know, it's frustrating for a lot of reasons, but rather than, uh, you know, I'll say add to, you know, writing letters and all that stuff, I just figured it was time to kinda step up and say, okay, if, 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 if there's something I can do to help, I'd like to be able to do that. Um, and that's kinda where I'm at, as far as that goes, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions about it. I don't wanna get to, I know you, like you said, there's a lot, a lot to get through tonight, but if you have specific questions about.
Okay, does it, the, the board members have any questions, um, about Jeff's materials or, um, their role in school committee? I guess I, I have a question. Uh, some of the board members have one. And I come from a family of teachers, Jeff, uh, so I think the question comes from a good place, but I don't wanna put you in a tough spot. I mean, you, um, you obviously have a, a good career as an educator and now administrator. Um, you know, the, the school committee isn't involved with the budget. Um, obviously, that's been an issue that, um, the towns have been grappling with, rising expenses over the last several years. Uh, the town of Rutland has a large, uh, structural budget deficit right now. Um, I'm just wondering, you know, given your background, uh, how you would approach that, uh, because I'm sure that you still have friends, family, they may be union members, they may be teachers. Um, is that something you feel you can do objectively in that role?
Sure. So my, my two, the two biggest things I would handle anything would, would really be transparency uh, and communication. So, you know, discourse is always good. Um, you know, building consensus is good. There's, there's a time that we can agree to disagree, but if you're, if you're transparent and you communicate effectively and, and honestly, uh, any, any issue, especially a, you know, budgetary issue, yeah, can be, can be handled. Uh, you know, using, utilizing those two things especially. I don't wanna, I don't know if you want specifics about, you know, so my budget in my school is certainly different than, than a, than a city budget or a district budget, but it's just at a smaller, smaller scale.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the board members? All right, um, thank you for submitting your materials. Um, obviously, we'll, we'll, is there anything else that you would like to add or?
No, I would just be, I'd be willing. Thank, first of all, thank you for, for having me here. And I, I loved the opportunity. And if there are any questions, any follow-up questions, or anyone wants to reach, reach out. Probably, I did speak to Megan weeks, very briefly. I happen to be part of a, a consortium that we are part of, and I asked her just briefly, but otherwise, I, I am aware of the commitment. It's sort of what I do every day, so it wouldn't be too much of a, um, other than the actual physical time. Uh, there wouldn't be much of a, it would be very manageable, so.
Okay.
So certainly, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Um, in the order in which they appear, uh, next individual on the list is, um, Mike Pantos, uh, Junior. Mike, you there?
Can't hear me all right?
Yes.
I'm, I'm at work, uh, had, had to cut out for this a little bit last minute, but, uh, hello, so I've lived in Rutland all my life, born and raised, and I saw this, uh, come across as a opportunity for me to get involved in the community. Uh, I've been following town, uh, I don't know whether to call it town management or politics, but the goings-on in town since I was fourteen years old, I've been at almost every, uh, large town meeting. And one of the things that often comes up is the, uh, budget for the schools. Now, I support our schools. I think we definitely need the best that we can do. However, um, I do feel as though the town has been taken advantage of in the past and, uh, that we need to just look at it a little more closely. And, uh, I have a twin sister. We both grew up going to, to the Wachusett Regional School District in town for uh, kindergarten through eighth grade. I went to Bay Path Regional after that. My sister went to Wachusett Regional High School after that. So if, I do have from my family seeing both sides of the school system. There are both options, I should say. Uh, I'd really like to bring, especially with all that I've heard going around town and through the district, I'd like to bring more transparency, integrity and, um, more communication to what's happening in the, the district. Uh, being in the HVAC field, one of my top concerns is the quality of, uh, the ventilation in our schools. Even prior to the whole COVID thing, uh, I feel as though a lot of public schools, mostly due to budget concerns, as, as a matter of fact, uh, their mechanical systems are very much ignored. Uh, so one thing that has come out of this is get, putting some more attention to the quality of our air in our schools. Uh, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Well, first, I just wanna say it's, it's, um, it was good to see your resume come in. I know your, uh, your family is giving a lot back to the town. Um, so it's good to see that you're, you're taking an interest in following their footsteps as well, so thank you uh, for doing that. Does any, do any of the board members have any questions for Mike? Ron, did you? Nope, I think you're right, Jan. All right, uh, Leah?
All right, thanks, Mike, for coming on. Um, similar to my first question with Brett, is the time commitment piece. I know, um, it sounds like you have a little bit of a, a non-typical nine-to-five work schedule, so just, um, how you feel about the time commitment and the availability, uh, for school committee meetings, especially given this COVID time where it's uh, been a lot more special meetings and longer meetings, so that's just one of my questions.
I'm prepared for that. I do have a little bit of intel, given that my, uh, dad served on the Wachusett Regional School Committee and the Bay Path, and my mom's currently on the Bay Path School Committee. Uh, I am aware of the long, uh, meetings. I do actually have a typical, my typical shift is seven AM to three PM. So tonight, uh, things just didn't land too well and I was asked to, uh, work twelve hours to help out with a project. So it's, it's not a, um, not a common occurrence. Just happens to land that way. Just happens to land that well, way, I'm prepared for the time commitment.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, and I think, uh, there were no other applicants that, that are actually in the, the meeting, uh, if you are here again, if I'm wrong. Alright, uh, I do see Matt, uh, who was, um, one of our sitting school committee members. Um, I didn't know if he wanted to, to chime in, uh, on some of those concerns, Leah, you had about time commitment. Uh, maybe what, uh, he thinks would be, we should be looking for in a school committee member. I think Ron originally, um, had reached out to me last week to indicate that, I think in prior school committee appointments, we maybe didn't invite. Our existing members to, and I think that was actually part of what we are, um, required to be doing when we make these appointments, and so. Uh, Matt and Sherry were both invited to, uh, to attend tonight. Um, and that's kind of, I think, maybe the process we should be following moving forward. Um, but then, to that point, I mean, Matt, uh, did you have anything you wanted to add to the conversation?
Thank you, Mitch, I think the only, the only thing that I would add, um, for the folks considering. This and for the board is even with. Four members from Rutland, you're sitting on a board of twenty-two individuals, so if you do the math. Even if you advocate for. The needs of the town, there's still a, a challenge there in terms of having that voice be heard amongst the committee, so. I just, I want, I want, um, everybody to understand that, that it's, it's not. As much time commitment as it can be a commitment to, to really listen to the people in the community and not be afraid to. To advocate for their needs, even if there's eighteen members who might think differently, or twenty members who might think differently. Not that you always have to, um, advocate for the last person that you spoke to, but I think that's a. Huge piece that I continuously hear from the community is years that they felt like. Their voice is heard, but it's not heard through the full, through the full administration, and I think that's a, a huge battle, um, and I hate to use the word battle, but it's an obstacle that. That needs to be overcome as time goes on, and the more that. You listen to the community, the easier it is to, to voice those concerns, so I just, I would point that out as. As a commitment of that takes time, but it also takes a lot of mental processing and research on the side to make sure that. You have a well-informed, um. Opinion, well-informed deliberating opinion.
Thank you. Alright, so the board has all of the application materials, um, spoken to folks tonight. Uh, we've heard input from Mr. Roy. Um, so at this point, I'll, either, uh, we can have a discussion, or if anyone wants to make a motion, I can entertain that.
Through the chair?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
I would like to make a motion to appoint. Mike Pantos Junior. As one of the members of the school committee.
Alright, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, second, uh, for discussion, Jeff, your hand is up.
Uh, yes, well, not related to, uh, the motion, I guess, but. Usually, we ask for a recommendation of the chair of a committee. Or board, or commission, uh, do we have any such recommendation of, of the applicants?
We invited, uh, the school committee members in, uh, we don't have any recommendations from them, though. Again, if, if Matt wanted to weigh in, uh, more than happy to, to weigh his opinion. Uh, on this, unfortunately, Sherry could not attend, uh, it appears, tonight's meeting, so, um, we don't have a written recommendation. Um, this is one of those appointments where it's my understanding, Ron, that it's kind of the sole discretion of the board. Uh, but you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct, and, and, uh, Jeff is also correct in that, and many boards and commissions, you look to the recommendation of the chair. In this case, though, the chair doesn't live in Rutland, is not a Rutland voter, is not a Rutland citizen. It has different interests than potentially the members who represent us from Rutland and serve on the committee. The bylaw specifically calls for the, uh, school command, school committee members that live in Rutland to be part of the. Replacement process for this, but. Uh, if the chairman was a Rutland citizen, I would think that that opinion would be very relevant, but in this case. I think it, it's really more important to get the input of members who actually live in town.
Jeff, did that answer your question?
It does.
Go ahead, now, do you have another question?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I mean, it's great, i- it's nice to see, um, the applicants come in, and I, I appreciate that all. Um, based on the resumes. Um, I don't know how we would overlook Brett Beardsmore and Jeff Sullivan on the resumes alone. Um, I'm gonna keep that into consideration of, of what specific needs we need to fill for the next. Six months, um. I do like the pharmaceutical. Background from Brett in there, as COVID is front and center. On the discussion, I, I like, I like that a lot, and I do like that. Sullivan is a, uh, seated principal, I did look at the other. Resume from Allison, and, uh, I mean, unfortunately, she's just not here for the interview. So. Can't ask questions or follow up in there, but she's, she's obviously qualified to, so, I would, uh, I just. Looking for a recommendation or any type of input from our professionals, either, uh. Matt from the committee, or, or Ron as our TA.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second, so I would just wanna remind the board that, um. While the mo, the second's for discussion, we should keep the discussion related to the motion, so. Um, if we have anyone that has any discussions or, uh, any opinions regarding the motion. Um, we can open up to, to those folks. Um, otherwise, that, because of the motion, the second will need to take a roll call vote.
I just wanted to say, I really wish that we could have, uh, some more discussion of, of all the candidates, rather than just pushing motions forward, but I understand there's a motion and a second, so that's. That, I just think that, um, we've gotten away from having a, a board discussion in a lot of these appointments. Um, and it's quick to a motion and a second without discussion is looking at our whole package of candidates.
That was my point.
Well, I think, um, again. I, I wanna push back against it a little bit, because we had a question and answer period with the folks that came in. And we've had a week to review materials. Um, nobody wanted to ask questions, so. You know, and I opened the floor up for discussion. And we had a motion and a second, so I mean, if, if we want to continue that discussion, we can do that, but procedurally. Um, this is where we are, and we've had these materials for a week, and we just had an interview period, uh, with folks in the room. So, um.
And I asked, I did ask questions, I, I wanna push back on that, I, I asked questions for our interview period, and. There wasn't really, it was, are there question, was there discussion or emotion, and there was quick for motion, so I get it, but I'm just. Making that point.
Understood, thank you. Alright, um, have a roll call vote, uh, Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Both aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, no.
Stillings.
Stillings, no, respectfully.
For city eye, motion carries, three ayes, two noes, um. Again, I'm gonna open this up to either discussion or. Uh, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, you, you didn't ask, I don't think, of the vote of the school committee member, and in this process, the school committee members have votes.
They do, okay, because we hadn't followed that prior. Uh. So I was not aware of that, so. Okay, uh, Mr. Lavoy, I will also bring you in for the vote on this procedure.
I am not aware of having the ability to vote on this, uh.
So the. Yeah, so, so through you, Mr. Chairman, the, in looking up the bylaw, fulfilling the appointment of any elected officials. That the member of the board that the elected official is from. Also is part of the meeting with the select board to make the decision. So according to the bylaw that I read, you do have a vote in this process, I know it hasn't always occurred that way. But that's the process for replacing a, a vacancy in an elected position.
So I, I respect that, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting in, with this body this evening, because. As a, as a school committee member, I do need to have approval from the school committee to. Speak on their behalf, so I don't know if it, if it, if it crosses that fine line or not, or because I'm, I'm only talking on Rutland town. Agenda items.
That, that, that is correct for you, Mr. Chairman, you are not representing the school district, your vote has no basis in. Policy decisions of the school district, or simply voting to replace a Rutland citizen, as if you went to the polls and voted, the school, the rest of the school committee. Is not involved in that process, so this is the same as if you had an actual vote system.
I think we need to back up, um, because we, we have not followed this process in prior school committee appointments. And as my understanding, the bylaw just says they have to be part of the conversation, there's not a vote. Um, that would create an issue, uh, when it comes to, I mean, for example, right now, we have even number of members. Um, that would then be voting. Uh. So I'm not, I'm not clear on, on that, I mean, it's just procedurally something we haven't done.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I, I think I can solve this pretty easily, I, I vote in every one of our town elections, and. I would say I, I support the will of, of this committee, whatever the will of this committee is on their vote, I would support that, and I would welcome. Whoever is appointed to the school committee to work with the town to best represent the town, so. I would feel comfortable offering that as a, as an opinion on it.
Okay, thank you, Michelle Boy.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I don't have the bylaw in front of me at this moment, my understanding is that the meeting. The purpose was as a joint meeting of the two groups, so I guess, I have to look at the bylaw, but I think, assumption based upon. The joint meeting that they would have a right to vote, but again, I don't have the bylaw in front of me.
Alright, well, I think we've, we've avoided that, um, that hurdle.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, I think at this point, I'll open it back up to the board, again, if we wanna have further discussion. I'm opening up to the board, I'm also open to a motion if any member so chooses to make that, having reviewed the materials. Is there anyone that has any discussion?
I think, I mean, I would like to look at the three remaining applicants, we have. One who is an educator, who I think is highly qualified, and would be nice to have a. Perspective living in town and as an educator outside of town, we have one who I appreciate the pharma aspect, and. Given our current COVID situation, and our remaining is, has a, is an attorney as a background, so I think all three of them are, are good. Um, and very well qualified, I am. Um, yeah.
Okay, Jeff.
Uh, thank you, a- as a board, are we in a position to appoint an alternate, a non-voting alternate?
No, I don't believe that that's part of the school committee bylaws.
Through the chair, make a motion. On who you would like to see on that board.
Who are you talking to, Skip?
I'm talking to Leah.
He's talking to me, 'cause I made a stink about the other motion. I would, I mean, I would, I would like feedback, I would like to hear from you, Skip, and from Lyndon, and from Mitch also, about what is important, what. What we as a board view as an important aspect for our school committee.
Okay, so here's, to, to Leah's response, and, and I, I know we all put a lot of time into looking at these materials. My concerns, you know, as an educator and someone with a child in town. Um, you know, we have a disconnect right now between the general population, large portions of it, both between each other. School committee and the administration. And in a micro sense, the administration and the union, right, so you saw that in the school committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you saw some of the horrible things that were all over social media, about all the members. Um, that were being posted, that, you know, certainly something where I think we've all been in that position where we've seen stuff about ourselves, that we don't like to see. Right, um, we had a polling go out to show that a majority of residents want hybrid model. Um. It wasn't, the parents I talked to and prepped for this meeting that I tried to get an opinion on as to what they would like to see. Indicated to me, it wasn't so much the remote learning, it was the fact that, um, they're having a tough time with planning. Uh, if we're set for a certain date, and that date gets pushed back to the last minute. Right, and I think there's some frustration there. I also think there's some frustration, and my concern is that, uh, we're in a position, where last year at town meeting. Everyone stood up, the school committee members, and the select board against FinComs, which is to recommend a budget. Uh, that wouldn't work for the town, and now we're in a position where we might have to have layoffs. Um, you know, I, I don't know where we can trim the fat in terms of our public services. So we're in a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar structural deficit, and we need to somehow. Communicate that this is a problem, both with the other communities and with our district. Now, I think I personally value the, the service they provide. Um, it's not only a great system, but it also buoys everyone's property values in town, which is great, right? Uh, but the issue is, we just need to get on the same page. So, I, I've spent the last week talking to parents in town as to what they'd like to see. Um, I've talked to both school committee members that we currently have serving. Um, you know, just to pick their brains about the time commitment and the job and what it's like. I've reviewed all the resumes and materials. Thank everybody, um, for applying, I think they all have a very different skill set. Uh, and that's, that's just my opinion, I mean, we're in a, a complicated situation, nobody expected to be where we are in twenty-twenty. And I think the decisions that these folks are making, um, you know, they're, they're tough, and they're gonna get. Put in a tough position, whatever decision they make. Um, and that's the unfortunate thing, it's gonna be a lot of time, and there's gonna be a lot of frustration. Um, and that's the way things have gone, and, and that's my concern, and I'm just trying to look for folks that. Uh, might be a little more proactive on the budget end of things. Um, and might share a little bit more, uh, enforce a little bit more transparency in the system. So. Does anybody else have any thoughts that they wanna share as part of the, the overall conversation? Jeff?
Can we, can we agree that it's between Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Beardmore is the two best qualified candidates? For the remaining position, are we down to those two?
Well, I would think, I mean, I, I don't wanna preclude, I think Allison was her name, um, for not being here, 'cause I know she had a valid reason for it, and her resume was very good. Uh, and I'm certainly open to discussing her qualifications as well, uh, but if, if that's your opinion, then I.
I, I don't know any of them, I don't know any of them, so I don't. Uh, but they're the ones in front of us today, and I'm just looking at the resumes, and. To me, it, they're, they're overly qualified, and I would hate to, but again, A, let's, let's keep it in perspective, we're only talking. For the next five, six months, right? Uh, we would certainly encourage all of them, all of them to run for the remaining seats in, uh, in May, so our. Our decision here is, is for a relatively short period of time, but we have one individual. Uh, who is a pharmaceutical expert, and the, and the other one who is a career educator, uh, who, who knows the system. So, um.
Leah, can I, can I ask, um, you have, you have kids in the district, not to put you on the spot, but I mean, um, because I know that you've been following. Some of these meetings, and obviously been on the communicated end of, of decisions by the district. What is it that you, I mean, as a select board member, but also as a parent, are, would like to see in a school committee?
No, I mean, I appreciate your input, Mitch, because I think that that's the dialogue that I appreciate having, is understanding. Where position, where people are coming from on their positions, maybe it's an aspect that I didn't think of, or that. You know, I'm not looking at a piece of something, so I appreciate that. Um, I agree, I think that a, a big piece of it is the, the communication, and. I feel like it's a common theme across with most elected boards in town, that, uh, the residents often feel like their wishes aren't carried out at the leadership level. And that goes across not solely strictly with school committee, so. Um, I think that that was kind of a major underlying theme with this, was not. I didn't hear so much, I heard a lot of frustration, and it was more about the lack of communication. Um, and just, it seemed kind of, everything was in turmoil, and I think a lot of people, the eighty percent hybrid piece. Is tricky, because I think a lot of people chose hybrid because they were kind of told, choose hybrid, you can always go back to remote, but if you don't, so. I don't know how true that is, if there was an actual remote program put forward. Um, rather than just kind of, we're still piecing it together, so I one-hundred percent agree that there's that transparency piece, and, um. I don't know, on a school committee the size that we have, twenty-two members, how, um. I feel like Rutland often has felt over the past ten years that we've been in town, um, that our. Town wishes aren't heard through the whole committee, and I think that that's a. A system failure, just by the size of the committee.
Yeah. Big committee. Alright, uh, Leonard or Skip, any thoughts?
I, I'd just like to say a little bit about, um, Mr. Pantos, I think he's been somewhat discounted, I, I like the aspect, the youth aspect, and the fact that he's been through the system. Um, and understands what's going with inside of the school, I know that there's been a lot of talk about the way students have felt and been treated. I think he'll give a different perspective, he'll give a youthful perspective of that, I know, uh. Leah, you had mentioned, um, on the cultural grant, I believe, we had a young candidate, and you were very excited that youth was getting involved. I would hope you would get behind another youth getting involved in one of our committees.
My understanding is that. My understanding is that Mike Pantos, it was already approved three to two. I just wish this discussion could have happened before because that may have changed. My my vote wasn't because I wanted to do our Mike Pantos Junior outright. It was because we didn't have any discussion, so. My understanding that he is already one of our our two positions filled.
I just wanted to make sure it just wasn't discounted.
Okay, all right. Um, does anyone else have any, any thoughts they'd like to share? Jeff, let's see.
Just my thought, piggybacking on uh what Leah said, uh, yeah, nothing against Mister Pantos Junior for sure, but. Uh, what is, what is in the best interest of the town based upon the resumes that we have and you have the two individuals who are overly qualified. Uh, as is uh Allison who's not here. I would, I would uh take note that she mentioned that she's only lived in Rutland since July, so. I'm still leaning towards, you know, the other two, but yeah, I certainly did not mean. That's why I said respectfully uh to to discount Mister Pantos. Do you know what I want to uh penalize the other applicants for not having youth, I guess? Back to my same discussion, I mean, I I think it needs to be between. The uh principal or the pharmaceutical experts, experts. And I mean, I'm fine either way. Let's let's pick the most qualified.
I think my my only concern, um, and again, I work in education, I'm from a family of teachers. Is, you know, I feel, I I think some of the parents in the district perhaps feel that, you know, it's tough. Particularly in budget season to negotiate. You know, if you are in a position in education. And and again, uh Jeff comes highly recommended, uh he's got a great resume. You know, I, I really appreciate his service, but that that's my only, my only area of concern with with um. With that and I and I asked him about it and he he had a good response, so um that's all I want to throw out there. Leah.
I just wanted to, in talking with a lot of the parents that I've talked to, I think most parents. Struggle with this budget aspect um because they don't see it as the teachers are. Are taking the majority of the budget. They would gladly pay the teachers more. In in most cases, but feel that that accountability and transparency in the budget and where their money is going is not there, so. I don't necess, I don't have that concern with, um, I guess I don't sh, I understand your concern and I think I can definitely. See that side of things. I don't necessarily share that side, thinking of the town as a whole. Wanting more transparency in the budget and where their tax dollars are going in the budget process versus. Advocating for just more money into the school system.
No, that's not, I it it's more, I do, I agree with your point, yeah, and I think maybe I just I I phrased my own. Please wrong, but it's more, I do it as a, it's a union negotiation is what it comes down to when it comes to. You know, those contracts, so it's, I don't see it as, you know, teachers getting allocated X, Y, Z, but it's more of a. Um, it's it's a simple contract negotiation with the union. So that's, that's where my only concern is, but it's not about who gets what and what gets allocated. Um, it's just from a fiscal perspective.
And I guess I'm coming at things from having um, looking at the kind of short term, the next six months kind of piece of where we are. Someone, right? Having some, well, because an election would come up in May, right? So. So having someone who is in the school system and familiar with school systems as both. The teacher's perspective as well as the administrative perspective is enticing to me for the short term is looking towards. Effective ways to get the kids. Back in school or re-engaged and what that looks like, whatever is the safest option. For the, for for the majority, knowing that you're not pleasing everyone.
Absolutely.
So I would, if there's. If it's okay, I would make a motion, but I I don't want to stem discussion because I I really honestly appreciate this discussion and feedback. And Skip, I would love to hear if you have anything um perspective wise, because you've been in town and through the school. School s- s- committee issues for the, for a while, so you have a unique perspective.
Well, if it was me, I would, you know, everybody's qualified to do the job, everybody. Somebody's outlook is different than yours and mine, but if. If I was to make the suggestion for the next, the other member, I would go with Mister Sullivan, but. I don't want to make that motion because I don't want to get yelled back.
We'll be kind, Skip.
Uh, Jeff, you have your hand up.
I would, you know, based, based upon qualifications and the position of the school committee. I I actually support what what Skip just said. Let's, let's go with the elementary school principal. And totally encourage uh Mister Beardsmore to uh put his papers in for the May election.
Yeah, I think I'm right there with you guys. I I, it's a tough decision. I think we had, we were fortunate that we had really good applicants. All four of them, so um, yeah, I would make the motion then to appoint um Jeff Sullivan. As the, as our second uh school committee member for this uh to fill through May. For the next election.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mister Lavoy, I know we asked you after our first motion and second, I will again uh bring you into the conversation if you have anything you want to add. Um, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thumbs up. All right, I'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Mister Clark. Nichols. Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Uh, Stillings. And Rercity, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you all. Again, uh Brett, excellent resume. Really look forward. I hope you, we have a lot of other committee openings. You know, if you uh folks wanted to, to apply. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate Allison couldn't um. Couldn't join us tonight.
Mitch, to the chair, I'd just like to comment that I'm very excited that there was this much interest because it's been a very difficult um position to keep filled. So I am hoping that the interest will continue.
Okay, and I'm.
What'd you say, Skip?
Turn it up, I can't hear you.
It's hanging on my face.
Sorry, thanks.
All right, so if we uh, we go back into order, this should be quick. On our old business, we have fall special town meeting. Any final preps and discussions? I think Ron had already covered that and it's had administrator update. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ron, or do we want to move on? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, I think we can move on.
Okay. All right, um, we have a sixty-one A, uh, lot one hillside road. Uh, go ahead, Leah.
Sorry to go back. Are we, is free cash looking like it will be certified in time and everything's good to go for the December third? I just, are there any potential last minute?
God, I hate that question. Now, I'll tell you why, because I I was on the phone with Dan today. And and Dan was telling me, he talked to. Division of, uh, Division of Revenue and they said, oh yeah, we're ready to go. And he was still waiting on answer at three thirty and he didn't get the answer. So I told Dan, Dan, if you don't have the answer by tonight, in the morning, we're gonna do a joint phone call with me and you. Uh, with the state and we're gonna get this thing done because we can't, I'm not gonna goof around this, it's, you know, we're coming into the town meeting on Thursday, it has to be done, so. I I, where or another, if it takes me getting on a phone call and and harassing the state, we're gonna get an answer on free cash tomorrow. I just think it's ludicrous that they didn't give Dan an answer now and and I'm kind of at this point not willing to wait anymore. So that conversation will happen tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify too for the public, because I know that we um, we have not. Uh, really met, I think, since the, the last time, it's supposed to be your, maybe once, but the free cash issue. Um, was simply related to, if you recall, we had the complex issues surrounding the combining the water sewer enterprise accounts. Last year, um, it sounds like one of the accounts was not closed out properly, uh, really through no fault of the staff. I think this is something that. So rarely occurs, um, the state had tried to walk us through the process, um, and it sounds like just um, it became a paperwork issue. Uh, and it's something that we just had to correct prior to the certification.
All the paperwork, it's my understanding, Mister Chairman, all the paperwork has been corrected at this point. Yeah, they said the state and the woman that's our representative at town, hold our town account that, you know, they were expecting to do free cash. An account was just frustrated, he expected it within an hour or two and it, you know, as of three thirty, he hadn't heard, so. We will find out in the morning, one way or another, what's going on, but I think.
Okay, sounds great. All right, so moving on, uh, we have chapter sixty-one A, um, lot one hillside road. I don't think any of the parties are here in the meeting, however, I I would like to check um. With uh, uh, Ron to make sure we received. Communication from all the other necessary boards about um interest in the property and what the results of that were.
So through you, Mister Chairman, we did receive all the information from the various boards. I have all those responses, uh. Nobody is asking for us to, you know, buy the property. They've all basically approved it. We had one concern from um. Land conservation or?
Conservation Commission.
Yeah, and and, you know, she didn't think.
Oh, land conservation, I'm sorry.
Land conservation, and and she didn't think that process was correct and she, in fact, she's right, uh, the person who who sent us that. Uh, the attorney, uh, I talked to the attorney about that, who said, you know, technically it's not right, but the board of selectmen. Has a right to waive any minor issues with it. Issue was that there isn't completely two separate. Documents as to each parcel of land. Uh, the town assessor. Jumped into that discussion and felt that it was irrelevant, that the just adjustment for what was sixty-one A property. Is gonna be changed and no longer in sixty-one A. He was surprised at the attorney's reaction. Uh, and he basically, you know, my opinion is that the technicality is a minor one and that you guys should move forward and waive the. Uh, waive that issue. The only, the only issue at all, I think, in that, it's a minor issue and and the attorney said, well. Uh, you know, you just, you don't want to open up the process to where the selectmen are constantly waiving issues. And I said, I agree. And if there was a significant issue, I I would agree with you, but this in my mind is a minor issue and the assessor feels it's a minor issue. And I think you can move forward and uh I think we could justify moving this minor thing along. Uh, in dealing with it, if there was a more si- significant problem in the future. Issue like the sixty-one A that we would deal with it and hold it if we had to. To Rutland land cancer conservatory, con- conservancy that raised the issue.
Okay, so um, do we have any questions from the board? Ron, I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want to set precedent here. You know, just to to clarify the issue that that we had with the, um, again, the paperwork. Uh, would cost both parties a significant amount of money. To remedy uh both the seller of the property and the purchaser. Seems like it was minor. But could you please reach out? Because I know this individual probably has more of these coming down the pipeline. Could you just reach out to the individual and make sure that um the proper procedure is followed moving forward?
I would be happy to do that, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't gonna set a precedent for if at some point it was something that the town was interested in. Or a group in town was interested in, um, that it was setting a precedent for making that difficult, so.
No, Leah, it's, it does not do that.
The specific issue, Leah, uh, go ahead, Ron.
I- if the town was interested in purchasing the land, it'd be a whole different story, but the fact is that the town has no funding or desire to purchase this property, so. Holding up on technical issues seems kind of minor and and having. The party spent a lot more money for an issue where we're not taking it anyway, is is seems to be, you know, not really good to treat our businesses like that, you know?
I I agree. I just don't want it to come back and bite us that because we did it this once, then, you know, so. If it's still viewed as a case-by-case basis.
The the issue, Leah, specifically was the, the property is a house with a bit of land behind it. The bit of land behind it, the small portion of land is what is actually in sixty-one A. The purchase and sale that was submitted between the seller of the land and the potential buyer included the whole property. And it's supposed to be a separate purchase and sale for the property, the house it's on. And a a specific person sale for the property, the land sits on, even if they're one combined parcel, I think. So it was just, it was one of those things where it was a a minor paperwork issue. Um, and again, I think um, after looking at it, uh, I'm not sure we're setting precedent if we can again. Uh, instruct our TA to just make sure, um, we get some clarification for that when people apply, these things are, are done appropriately. All right, do we, anyone have any more questions about the uh, the property, the process?
And I looked at all the, sorry, I looked at all the document. No one had any interest, so. I think there was very, they saw very little agricultural um relevance in that parcel, so.
I don't even think there's any frontage, to be honest with you, on the, the parcel that's actually in sixty-one A. Um, so there's really not much that could be used for anyhow.
Interestingly, guys, taking property out of sixty-one A is a good thing tax-wise for the town. Because the the purpose of being a sixty-one A is to reduce your taxes, so even though it's minor in nature, getting out of sixty-one A is a generally a positive thing.
I'd be very careful saying that, Ron. Said be very careful saying that, Ron, listen, these are come up, but.
Terms of non-conservation, in terms of tax issues, that's all.
Understood. All right, so if there's no other uh discussion from the board, um, I will make the motion to waive the town's right of first refusal. Uh, under sixty-one A for lot one hillside road. The motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll have a roll call vote. Clark. Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Stillings.
Aye.
And Rercity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Um, next on the agenda, we have Board of Health, Nursing Services Contract. Scott, uh, thank you for hanging in there. We had a lot of people come into this meeting uh that uh wanted to uh, to weigh in on certain things, so appreciate you hanging in.
No, no biggie. So basically, uh, right now, we are using for our communicable nurse, we're using a a woman out of Sutton. And she is employed by the Sutton uh Board of Health. So one of the issues we've, we're, we're now learning in, unfortunately, it took a pandemic to to show it, is. She is farther away than we would really like her to be. Her, her cost per hour is pretty high up there. And she's also taking care of four or five or maybe even six other towns as well as working on Sutton. So uh, you know, we took a look at that. She, she was hired back in two thousand sixteen and I think it just was one of those things that we. We needed a communicable nurse because the woman we had the time had retired and we put it out to bid and she came back and. I think she might have been the only one who came back and offered her services, so um, we've, you know, we've been talking about her for a while now. And the, the nurse that we want to replace her with is Judy, who has helped us with our flu clinic for the last ten years. She lives in Hubbardston. She's part of the 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 Wachusett uh Nurses uh Corps. Uh, I mean, she. She actually, she agreed to do it for twenty-five dollars less an hour. And oh, by the way, that, that twenty-five dollars less an hour won't include really a forty-minute hair and back drive time. That we're, we're paying for right now. Uh, so we think it's a win-win. We have, you know, we have a great relationship with. With Judy, we, we've known her for, you know, ten plus years. Uh, she's close. She, we've actually talked to her about what she does uh compared to the other nurse and like especially with the COVID now. She actually follows up with the patients that test negatively. Where right now, the, the nurses only have to follow the take patients that test positively, but she's doing the, you know, the, the extra work. And she's making a couple extra trips to visit them if they do test positively, so. I, we think, you know, that we're probably not getting that much kid glove care right now from our current nurse. Um, just obviously she's overworked and she's told us this so much. So we just think it's, you know, it's, it's gonna save the town some money, not a whole lot of money, but it'll save town some money. It's gonna make it easier and it's gonna give us a relationship that we have a really good uh friendship with, you know?
Are you looking for a motion or is this just?
So the um, the way it was, the, the last uh contract was set up is that the, the Board of Selectment actually. Uh, signed the contract and uh approved the contract. So in reading the um, the termination clause in, in that contract. The, the Board of Selectmen have to vote on the termination and then I guess you'd be voting to accept the next one. I- i- if you guys feel right. I mean, I, I, I don't think there's another way around it. I don't think, you know, that would be on the Board of Health uh voting. I think. I think that would be on your vote.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Scott from the board?
Just for clarification to the chair, is it a termination or a um resignation?
So we, we would be terminating uh her contract. So we, we would be terminating, uh, her contract. Um, it, so basically the contract was started in two thousand sixteen. It was good for a year and then it just basically was ongoing until we parted ways one way or another, and all it's need is a thirty day notice. So we would be terminating her contract, the, the, the current communical nurse. And we would be bringing on a new contract with a new communical nurse.
Scott, this, um, I'll go ahead.
Just continuing with the contract, so.
Um, Scott, uh, and then Leah, I see your hand up. Um, this is a really difficult time to be in a transition in this position with the numbers going up in the town now in the red. Uh, I guess my question to you is, uh, you, I want to make sure that you don't expect to see any dip or inconsistencies in service provision um, as the old contract is phased out and the new contract is started.
Um, I, I, I would say no. I mean, dealing with Cheryl, I, I mean, she's on the up and up, but, but I, I do have to tell you, we as a board have, you know, felt that she's been overworked, obviously. You know, she has, as I said, she may have four or five more towns other than Rutland and Sutton that she's working right now. So I think she's overworked as is. So I think us doing this is being, you know, is more reactionary or, or, you know, trying to prevent anything that comes down the road. If it were to get even worse, that we would be, you know, being forty minutes away versus her working for, say, Sutton and maybe North Ridge or Whitenville that's closer, that we might be the, the town that gets visited third or fourth or fifth. You know, where she has to make her rounds for, uh, checking in on these folks. So we actually think this is gonna be better. And I, I don't, you know, again, I don't think she would, this, this next thirty days, she would, uh, take back anything that she's done already.
Okay, Leah, you had your hand up.
I think that that kind of touched, um, my question was just making sure that there wasn't going to be any, uh, lapse in service or anything. Um, one other quick question, and Lyndon touched on this also, is because it's an IMA with Sutton, we just need to provide the thirty days notice and that's it, there's nothing else. I tried to read through the IMA and I didn't notice anything about termination. Oh, it looks like Ron might have an answer.
Uh, so I'm looking at the existing contract. It has a provision for termination. Either municipality may terminate this agreement upon the provision of at least thirty days prior written notice to the other municipality. Such notice and termination shall be made following a vote of the Board of Selectmen of the terminating municipalities. So once you make a vote, you have to send them to a letter and let them know that in thirty days, the contract is terminated. So that employee effectively, Scott, will be working for us for the next thirty days.
Correct, and I'm kind of hoping that we can start the new contract as of January first, twenty twenty-one.
Because you're going to run it longer than thirty days, the existing person.
Well, you, you'll vote tonight, we'll give her her thirty day notice, so I'm assuming a letter would go out say tomorrow, which would be December first, thirty days would be the thirty-first of December. So January first would be the, the first day of the new contract.
And so just talk to me tomorrow so we can draft the letter of termination and and get it out or get it out to Sutton, okay?
Perfect.
All right, so I guess we'll entertain a motion for the board to sign, uh, the, the new agreement, uh, per Scott's request. Is that, Scott, that's what you're looking for, Ron?
No, actually, no. The first thing you need to do is, is Scott pointed out, is you need to
Okay.
vote to terminate the existing agreement and then you do your next step.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain that motion, the board.
So move Stillings.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Recity, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimous.
Mitch, it's Tamika. I apologize. I missed who seconded the motion.
Uh, Jeff made the motion and Skip seconded.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, and now to follow up, we would need a motion to, uh, sign, enter into a new contract for the, the new, uh, communical nurse.
You want the town administrator to sign, Mitch, or do you want the whole board to sign?
I think it would be the motion and then we could designate the town administrator to sign if the board wants to do that.
Well, then I'll make the motion to sign this letter per the TA.
Waitman, seconds.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say thanks to Scott and the Board of Health for taking this on and realizing that there was a need during the pandemic to have someone a little bit closer. So I know it's a lot of, you guys have had a lot of work and I appreciate the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
You got the good words, Scott.
Absolutely. All right, motion and a second. I'll have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote. Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, uh, moving on, we've covered, um, Bay Path Request. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of authorized signatory, which is something Skip just touched on. Um, there are a lot of issues where obviously we need things signed. Uh, and with the, the buildings being, um, closed to us for our meetings, uh, it becomes tough sometimes to get over there. Um, what this would do, if the board were so interested, we could appoint the TA as an authorized signatory. So, um, the things that we vote on, uh, some of the things at least that need our signature, uh, with our permission, uh, the TA can sign off on, on the board's behalf. Ron, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. The only issue I'm a little bit concerned with, and I just got to check with the lawyers, is the sixty-one A has signatures for each selectman to vote on? So if I can do it, that'd be fine, but if not, then I'll just kick it back to you guys for signature.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to appoint the TA as an authorized signatory, uh, as we move forward for some of these documents. Um, again, I think this is something where if there's something that comes up, the board is not comfortable with that. Um, we can make the, uh, the motion to perhaps exclude that, um, from the signatory authority or whatever the board wants to do. It just makes things easier.
That was my question. Sorry, go ahead, Ron, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, just, just one thing. I'm sure that I'm not going to sign any document that isn't first voted on by the Board of Selectmen. Just let's, that, that's clarity.
That was my question, was just confirmation that it would be things that we vote on that then basically say have Ron sign on our behalf. So Waitman makes the motion to appoint Ron as the authorized signatory.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, I have a discussion. Do we want to amend it with a date ending or is this just kind of open-ended? I'm not, I don't remember how we did this before.
I don't know what the date ending is for the pandemic, so we'd be a little bit optimistic. Uh, I don't want to put us in a position like the Wachusett Regional School District did have a date ending and then have to re, uh, go back on it, but, um, it's up to the board, uh, but I, I think that, you know, realistically, we can revisit this at any time. Um, if we want to either rescind it or end it. Uh, I would, I would hope that at some point in the near future, we're going to be back in person, but I'm open to, Leah, if you want to amend your motion to include that, I'm open to that.
I don't have a preference. I just wasn't sure if we needed to have a date ending or not, so I'm okay kind of, Ron.
But my, my only comment is that I want to be clear that there's going to be certain documents that the state puts out that are going to require your specific signatures. In those cases, regardless of whether I have the authority, I won't be able to do it because it'll be required by the state. Those documents you're going to have to sign. So this will eliminate a lot of the minor issues for you guys. But there are going to be certain significant documents in, in fact, that you are going to have to sign, regardless of giving me this authority.
This is the same thing we did with Mike, too. I mean, there's certain things that come down that are, that are bigger that we, we're still going to have to come in and sign. It's just the day-to-day stuff.
I think we've done it with, um, I think we even had it with Margaret also. So I'm finally leaving it open-ended. I wasn't sure if the board had a, as a whole, had a preference.
Okay, does anybody have a vote?
COVID wise to do it.
Okay, any more discussion from the board? Uh, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Clark.
Aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Um, excuse me. Last on the agenda, uh, we have the Moses Howe Award, um, opening the nomination period. If anyone in the public recalls, um, something Jeff had kind of spearheaded. Uh, last year was our first, um, I think inaugural year of the Moses Howe Award for Public Service. And, uh, Jeff, I don't know if you want to say a few words about it?
Um, well, thank you and thanks for putting this on the agenda. So the, the Moses Howes Hour Award, the Select Board's, uh, annual award for recognizing excellence in public service in there, uh, we had already voted and, uh, filled for two thousand nineteen. Uh, it is now incumbent upon us to, uh, fill and, uh, vote on somebody for two thousand and twenty. So, um, we hadn't really set the precedence on when to do that. I think it would be, uh, wise, you know, at the end of the calendar year, as opposed to fiscal year, to, um, set the open nomination period for, say, the month of December for nominations for our annual, uh, awards. So that's all I would ask is that we, uh, we open it up for nominations and also, uh, the, the wording of the original intent of the board was that the nomination can come from anybody, any member of the public. And it's for excellence in public service and it doesn't, it's not limited to the police department. It's for, uh, it's, it's open-ended in there, so. I'll just ask that we open the nomination period in, uh, the twenty twenty award.
Okay, I think, uh, last year, we had Ron, uh, put, uh, a link to submit a nomination on the town's homepage. And maybe that's something, um, we can get up and going, um, in the next week or so to get up there. And then, uh, at the next board meeting, perhaps Jeff, if it's okay with you, I know this is kind of your baby. We can set a date, um, to review the nominations, uh, go over them publicly and then take a vote. Um, perhaps at the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, so the end of December or the first one in the new year. It's up, up to the board, but, um, to throw that out there, maybe is the process we want to follow.
Certainly after the, uh, special town meeting, you know, all, you know, all the big business before us is taken care of. Um, and just as an update for the, for the board, the perpetual plaque is at the Public Safety Building. It's in the hands of the police chief and, uh, the process of working with the DPW to have it, uh, properly mounted out there. The engraving for the two thousand nineteen Select E has been done. It's ready to go.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments? All right, uh, seeing none, um, I don't believe we need a motion to open that. Uh, Ron, should we have a motion to open that?
I don't think you need to. I, I think it's, it's an honorary thing. I don't think you need a motion. Chairman, if I could make one comment though, before you adjourn. I want to let the board know that Erin, uh, effectively started today. She's been working with Laura. I expect her to be working with Laura for the next couple of days to get some training done. Before Laura leaves, I think you'll find, you know, Skip was in and got a chance to meet her today. I think you'll find that you're going to really enjoy working with her as much as you did Lauren. So I'm looking, Laura, I'm, I'm looking forward to that transition and I appreciate Laura's hard work and spending the time with her and making sure she's up to date on all local issues.
And Ron, if I can add, if she needs any help at all, please let her know. I'm happy to help with whatever I can.
Yeah, Tamika, we should get you guys together pretty quickly and and do it. Like I said, I would give, um, Laura Quell and actually schedule a meeting to come in with her and talk so you get to know each other. I think you'd be really pleased. She's very bright, uh, very hard worker. She has a history in working in local government, doing all the same things as it Laura's doing now, so I think it's going to be a good match. And I don't know if Skip wants to come in, he at least got a few minutes to say hello to her today. Uh, but I think it, it's a, it's a good transition and and I think you'll be happy that she's the kind of person you'll enjoy working with.
And Ron, she's in office right now, so if we stop up sometime this week, she's there to introduce.
Yeah, I told her, you know, I'm trying to be a little careful because I got to stay within the budget for that line item. So there is a little bit of extra room, so I want them to work together. So I told her to only come in when Laura's in, so Laura usually comes in around then. Um, so just, I would just call and make sure she's there, but yes, she's there and she's kind of working the same hours as Laura at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else to come in from the board, we have no correspondence. Any members of the public, um, not through, uh, public session? So if there's nothing else on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Clark.
Clark, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman.
Waitman, aye.
Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
And Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you, everyone, and, uh, enjoy your week.